This is general government. It is Wednesday, February 8. We have roll call, Councilor Ryan.
Present.
Councilor Venus.
Present.
Ms. Shea.
Present.
And myself are present. And Ms. Clements could not attend because she is out of the country right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I would just like to note officially on the record that I think going forward, anytime there's a meeting that's following another meeting, you should just have on there, posted, 7:00 PM or immediately following. Because now it's an hour later than what was supposed to happen because the last meeting did take so long.
It took so long, yeah.
And I question whether or not this would be in violation of open meeting law since we're starting later than anticipated with no time, nothing posted on here that it would be following after that meeting, another meeting, so.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that would be an issue, to be honest with you. We have sometimes posted it that way. And I, I don't think anybody expected the last one to take as long as it did.
Which is why I'm saying going forward, we need to make sure that if there's another one following, that this just automatically be done so the situation doesn't occur. Because it puts us in a weird legal gray area, Mr. Chairman.
Please leave it open, if at all possible. If anybody, it's not too out of the...
Down.
Okay, good, okay.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
But you do have a point, though. Thank you. Thank your point, but, okay, anyway. I unfortunately did not get the chance to finish the minutes, so let's skip over number three. Oh, can we, can we, since we have a couple of people here that are specifically here for one of the agenda items, which is one of the later ones, which is specifically, it is the proposal to do the rules on, and unfortunately, I have the older agenda in front of me. The agenda in front of me, so let me see if I can find the right ones.
John, borrow mine?
Huh? Thank you. Because my, I have the other one somewhere buried in my email. And, okay. Specifically, I'm referring to the number 11. Can we take that one out of order? Because we have a couple of few people here specifically for that item. The potential bylaw on prices for necessities.
Okay.
We can take that one out of order because Mr. Malouf came here.
I guess the question would be, out of necessity, Mr. Chairman, is that something that needs to be brought up tonight compared to the other items that have to be brought up?
Primarily it's because he's here.
Okay.
Because he actually, he actually drove me from Worcester. I'll talk about it. So, and so I wanted to give him a chance since he did care and he did sit through the entire last DPW meeting. So, I appreciate the fact that you came. I didn't, and I'm sorry, you had to sit here for so long. We didn't expect anything to take as long as it did. You can leave that open. It might be nice to let some air circulate. It's really hard here. It's quiet, it's gotten a little quieter in the hallway, so that's good. So, Mr. Malouf, is it? Yes, would you care to kind of raise the issue that you have?
I move that we take agenda item number 11 and move it to the first agenda item of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All of us are better? Opposed? Yes? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Malouf. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for making the right town.
Thanks for the invitation.
Was it easy enough to find? Was it easy enough to find?
What was that?
Were my directions good enough to get here? I hope it's you got here, but...
Yeah, this time I made it. I was a victim of dark roads where there was no lights on the road and I missed the turn.
There's a lot of those in this area. Yes.
I, I was looking here to get samples so that, who's gonna be involved in the decision?
Okay, all, all four of us. I'm chairman.
I got only three copies plus one.
I have mine, I have mine on email, so I can...
Well, I have the old one, the original statute on it and, when, before it was enacted. Let's see, yeah.
You can let the, the two councilors, I'm just a citizen volunteer, so let the two councilors.
Okay. Who's next?
Three councilors.
Three councilors.
Three councilors. He already has his.
I already have it.
Oh, which one do you have, Gus? Which one? The, the one that involved Calvin Coolidge or the later version?
I had the, I had the, the original one you sent me.
Well, that's, that's the actual statute that was enacted by the general court and the sign.
I actually haven't seen any of these.
Oh, you don't have one?
Yeah.
No, I gave you one different one.
Yeah, you sent me the original text. Yeah, so, yeah. Now, that's, that's the one you were showing us. Okay. So, go ahead and just kind of summarize what, so what is it that you're...
All right. We're going through a period of rising prices and for all kinds of personal profit, you know, chattels and whatever. And this law had the same, was, has the history back in 1919 after World War II. Prices were going high, high, just like they are now. So, I feel this is appropriate to that situation and today's new rules of economics that raise all the prices and we'll have no control over it. This is a criminal statute with penalties. The old version, we have to make changes to it, but it's a deterrent. It's a crime, a criminal statute.
Right.
It's not a, like murder or robbery or rape.
Right.
It's one that's created by statute and it's called, I think, Mal, not Malum, yeah, Mal, it's a different word. It's a, it's not a crim, real true crime. It's a made by crime by statute.
You mean misdemeanor?
No, it's not a misdemeanor either. It's a crime made by statute.
Okay.
There's a, I forgot the exact words. But anyway, it's to protect, it's to control the prices for necessaries of life.
Okay.
And I think everybody knows today that prices in grocery stores, wherever you go, they're skyrocketing. And this is, would be a statute once enacted, if it will do enact it. Or it would be a, I don't know, what would you call it here at this level? Bylaw?
It's a bylaw, yes.
This would be a deterrent to any further increases. It should discourage the raising of prices as it did in 1919 when Calvin Coolidge signed it into law. But back in 1958, under the control of the legislator then and Governor DeCarkus, they repealed it.
You mean 1978?
Which was the biggest mistake, I feel, that was made in Massachusetts history. Because it protected ordinary people from having speculators and people who want to gamble taking money from families. This is a deterrent to it because it's a criminal statute.
Okay.
So, I'd like to have the town review it. If there's anything I can further do, I'll be glad to give it. I've given you some papers. What have I given you two of those? How many papers was it?
Two.
Yes.
All right, there's a third one.
Chapter 99 page, the page of many acts.
There's the...
The declaration.
Yeah. I want to give you this. We've got laws that, in our country, that make it possible to enact this now. And I'll show you where it is in a moment. Here's this one here for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The statute, I don't know if I even reserved a copy for myself. Let me see, I should have it.
Do you have the amended language as well for the new law passed by Governor DeCarkus?
What was that?
Do you have the language?
It was repealed.
It was in the package.
It was repealed, entirely.
Oh, it was just repealed? There was no, it was just a repeal?
Well, not good.
Let me see here. I'll go from memory because if I don't have it, I don't have it. I thought I made enough copies, but I didn't.
Are you referring to the section that you said that was labeled Calvin's law?
Yeah, the one that...
The one, the one that I had an issue with printing because I couldn't, because I can call it up, but I can't change, I can't do anything with it.
Yeah. Yeah, you couldn't modify it.
Yeah, I couldn't do anything.
It's, the one that's labeled, I don't have the, let me peek here. The one that Calvin Coolidge signed as an emergency measure back in 1919, September. They had prices for necessaries of life were skyrocketing.
Right, right.
And this was a criminal statute, not the kind which deals with murder, robbery, rape. It's that one Malum and not, not Malum.
Okay.
It's got a special name for it. It escaped me right now.
And say versus Malum prohibitum.
And this will be a deterrent if enacted by the town. Now, does the town have authority to do that? I say yes.
That would be, honestly, that would be something we'd have to clearly determine from our town attorney.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
We may. We certainly would have to bounce it off of them.
Of course. I'm not, I'm not your, I'm not the town council or the town's lawyer.
Right, sure, sure.
I realize that. But I'm presenting it and I anticipated, I was gonna say, that you'll have to consult with your lawyer for the town.
Right.
But the, where was I on that?
You were talking about the emergency act that was passed in 19, or the emergency amendment to the constitution that was enacted by Calvin Coolidge.
Yeah, but that was done at the level of the Commonwealth.
Right, yeah.
But if you look at the Declaration of Independent, Independence, for one thing, and, I don't know if I had a copy of it here, it's, let me see it. You'll have to let me look at one of those. Here it is. I'll just identify it. It's the document that talks about Article 10 of the Federal Constitution that says powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor published, I think that's, nor prohibited by it, I can't read it. You'll have to read it yourself. It's right here with the yellow highlight. It leaves it, there's three categories. The last one is what applies and gives you the authority to do it. All the people.
Right, right.
And if you read the Declaration of Independence, where I highlighted in yellow, you'll see the statement that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, which was life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, as examples, it is the right of the people, meaning you, me, not the legislature, not our legislature, the general court in this case, us, we can, let's see what it says here. Becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter, and that's what I'm saying we want to do now, not abolish anything. It's, and it's to institute a new, we're not gonna institute a new government, it's just a modification of our present government to patch up the problem we have. So, that's, that's essentially the law.
Right.
And I feel there's a sound law. It's well within the authority of this, this town to do so. Because if you look at the other law I gave you, I read it a moment ago. Can I take a look at yours? I don't, I don't happen to have enough copies, so the next one.
It's okay.
That's okay.
Now, this one, yeah. This one here says the, as I mentioned a moment ago, it says, "Or to the people."
Right.
And this is a situation where this is your authority by the Constitution to enact this if you want. And I think it's a good thing to do it because we, I think we're in the same situation they were back in 1919 where prices for necessaries of life skyrocketed.
Right, okay.
And so, as a result, we're now faced with having the people do it because the general court today is not, not the same court that they had in 1919.
It would be a little bit if it were.
It's quite different. It's quite different. So, they will not be, they won't be, they won't welcome it. Because I think they were part of the, Governor DeCarkus, when he repealed this law in 1990, 1978, and the legislature then, they had what's going on in mind. Removing the people and the middle class, that's gonna, that's their goal, rich and poor, in the end. And this will save the middle class, you and me.
Okay.
So, that's the idea.
Okay.
And I think you have all the authority you need there to send that over to your lawyers and have him make an opinion of whether you should move forward or not.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how you, whether you, what your influence on the, your lawyer would be, but you may want to say, "Well, I think it's a good thing we should seriously consider this." And I really mean it.
Right, right.
Is there anything, I have any questions for me?
Well, I saw Jackie's first, so Jackie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm interested in investigating what measures we as a town could bind to help lower the costs of us doing business or everyday, average working people doing business, right? That's something I want, like, for us to look at. I just, if I understand this correctly, just with the layman's perspective, this was an amendment that was then repealed?
No, it was, it was a direct master of law.
It was a new law, it was a general law.
Okay, it was a law.
Yes.
Okay. So, but if that law in its entirety has been repealed, not reverted.
Right.
Do we, I, I understand, and this is why I have legal questions. I understand what you want to do.
Right.
Do we even have the authority? So, that's, that's my basic question is, do we even have the authority?
I say you do.
And I understand your point, but unfortunately, I would, I would feel more comfortable if we ran this by our legal counsel for the afterwards.
Of course.
Because I don't, I don't want to do anything that's gonna violate Commonwealth or federal law that's, and I understand the point, but I also understand that this was an emergency provision and...
No, that was then.
And that was then, and that we would need to make sure we have something that's appropriate for today's circumstances. Because, I mean, the, the everyday costs that they were dealing with back then that they needed for necessary to life are very different than what's necessary for life today.
Well, that's one of the things we're...
I think they're pretty much the same. Food, price for transportation.
Electricity.
Electricity.
But electricity is not something that was all over the United States even in 1919.
No, that's true. It's still a common necessity.
It's a common necessity. But I think we need to, we need to look at all of those aspects and see how, what cost preventative measures we could take and put into place that would be in conjunction with Commonwealth statute and law in judicial cases as well as federal. Because this is a good idea, I just think it's a, we need to have more fine tuning of it for a bylaw.
Yeah, no, this is a stat.
Right, absolutely.
I just wanted to bring it to the gentleman's attention that this is what we could work with and, not me personally, but you as a town.
Right.
No, my position is only one of information.
Okay.
And hopefully, you'll adopt it. So, that's, that's pretty much what I had to say.
Thank you very much.
I have two questions. First, I'm curious whether anywhere in the bill or the law, they delineated or they said what were, what they considered necessary or necessities of life?
They didn't. They left it open.
Okay.
Because that's for the judge to decide with arguments by the lawyers who are involved in the criminal case. This is a criminal case, but not in Malaman say, Malaman prohibitum.
Right, okay.
And then my second question is, do we have any, do you have any information as to why it was repealed in 78?
You're opening up a big can of worms. What I think was going on, it started with the Council on Foreign Relations, which is not a government agency, it's private people who wanted to make a one, a New World Order. Let's see, and what was the, what was the question again?
Why it was repealed.
Yeah.
Well, why it was repealed?
Yeah.
Yeah, they want to, this was a thorn in their side. How could the speculators make any money? So, this took it away from them, protected the middle class. That's the key of it, the middle class's protection. And as most of us, we're middle class. So, it should appeal to middle class people. And I think it's something that's very appropriate to enact if the council wants to move forward, your town council. And I really, I urge them to do it. I think it's an excellent statute. We'll have to adopt some changes to it to make it more, modern. We can't have just a $1,000 penalty. We have to have probably a $100,000 penalty for each offense. There's, certainly we'll continue the imprisonment, but I think maybe we should enlarge the time a little bit. Maybe at a 10 years or 15 years. Whatever you think you can manage to get through the, to enact it.
Could we, I would just, just as an informational question, can we even as a town set punishments that are not financial, but like punitive, like imprisonment?
I don't think we can.
I don't even think we can.
I think we can.
No.
I think we can set fines.
We can set fines, but I think that's our limit.
I think, I think you're probably right.
That's a state level issue. They, they are the ones who set the laws for imprisonment.
Well, what I, what I want to point out is, I'm getting old, I'm 80. So, I tend to get lost in my own words. But the, you touched, one of you touched upon something that made me think of what I wanted to tell you. Would you repeat what you said?
I, I was asking whether, I, I don't, I don't even think it's within our jurisdiction to impose like penalties in terms of punitive punishments, more financial, like, okay, here, here's a fine. We can, I don't believe that local government has the ability to set laws that would be criminal.
Not criminal.
Criminal, no. That would be, that's not within our power.
Well, this is, yeah, this is a criminal statute.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can send, send them to prison.
Prison. But I think all we can do is charge them a fine, yeah.
Well, no, you wouldn't, you can't do it, but you go to court with this authority and ask the court to put someone in jail.
Well, we'd have, yeah, we'd have to bounce that off the, off the judge. We'd have to bounce that off the attorney's, whether we have the legal authority to do that at this level.
Because that was, that was the law that gave the towns the legal authority to do that, now it's gone.
Exactly.
So, now we would have to see what other avenues would come in we have.
Well, there's...
We can, we can, we can set fines.
Yes, that we can use.
There's no doubt about that.
Yes.
Well, that's not gonna be a really big deterrent. They're making millions off, billions off of us. They don't care. That's not gonna make any difference.
Unfortunately, this is true. And that's, as we have seen way too often, they, they just run roughshod of the small communities.
They just run all over.
I mean, our community, our community is a budget of like $60 million. We're talking giant corporations that come in and do whatever they want. They're worth several billion dollars. It's like, "Oh, yeah, really? We don't care."
Yeah, I'd like to...
We should all the time.
In case I can't remember what I said, I wanted to say, I'd like to reserve right to send something to the gentleman here and...
You can, you can always send something to me, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. There's, I'm suggesting the police department here. And I put it in letters to you, the, it's the police department, together with the district attorney, they have authority to prosecute. And I think they have the authority to prosecute not just for fines, but more than that.
They, they, I, they do. That's from the state, that's it. I don't know if we can tell them to prosecute the criminal offenses.
We can't.
I don't know. We'd have to ask the county.
We would have to, with a state law.
Yeah, right.
We'd have to cite, saying that we have the power to direct the district attorney or something to do that. We can't just create something like that. That's a legislative power, not a municipal power.
Well, no, we have, we have common law crimes.
That's, this is true.
And I should think the town should be able to enact a bylaw that would be the same as what they would do at a higher level in government, state government.
To a certain degree, that's true. And the way that, the way the laws are structured, as I understand them, is that many of the authorities that the towns have are granted by the section, what's what are called the home rule, home rule laws of the state constitution.
That I don't, yeah.
And those, those, many of them date back to colonial days.
Yes.
But I think that we, we do not have authority to create laws that overrule the state, state law or federal law.
Uh, no.
We can create laws, if we can figure out ways to have the law drafted in such a way that it still afford, that it still complies with some element of state or federal law, we can do it. The problem is finding how that works in, especially with this, this, the fact that the state, that the state repealed this particular section of the law.
Well, you might be right.
We can, we may be able to take this and use this on the local level.
And like...
We could, in some way.
Drafting regulations in some way, right?
In some way. Because we do have the power to create bylaws. So, it's, this is definitely an unusual situation because I've, I've never tried to do something like this. So, it's certainly worth looking at. I'm not, I'm not trying to...
Yeah, no. Oh, I know that.
It's certainly worth looking at.
Yeah.
Maureen?
Did you have your hand up first?
Okay, sorry, very much, yeah.
Is any other town doing this?
I, I just started here. I, I started this about a month ago and...
All right, okay. So, at this point...
Well, wait a minute, I got some...
No, no, no.
I got something else here I want to show you.
Okay.
It'll have to be passed around because I only brought one copy.
Okay, Maureen?
It's from the Telegram and Gazette, and I'm not trying to toot my own horn.
Don't shoot it down.
Oh, yeah. I told you, we wanted to take a look at it.
Don't shoot it down. We're gonna find out.
Yeah, I'm not shooting it down.
No, he was talking to me.
I got a good reason.
She was talking to me.
No, thank you very much.
Because I think this is a really good thing to protect citizens.
I agree. I probably would love to see if you could do something like that, yeah.
We're witnessing disaster capitalism and...
Let's see, just give me a moment here. I had a, a copy here from the Telegram and Gazette, and I'm not trying to promote my own, myself, but it, it was approved by the Telegram. It had to do with necessaries of life. And it's an interesting article, not because I wrote it, because it touches upon what we need now, protection from the speculators.
Yep.
And the people with money. Here it is.
And that's been more recent than, than this stuff?
This is, I wrote this to the editor in the Worcester Telegram Gazette when it was a good newspaper, back, back in 2010. I've been thinking about this for a long time. If you're, the article's very short, if you all, each want to read it, it's a very short article.
Wall Street using Main Street as the casino, totally true. Absolutely true.
Yeah. I wrote in the, I, I didn't even identify the name of the lawyer. He was a judge in the Superior Court of New Jersey. His name was, it's right in there.
Napolitan?
Yeah, Paul, no, what's his first name?
Andrew Napolitan.
Yeah, yeah. Andrew Mal, Paul, I forgot it.
I've heard of him.
Yeah, yeah, he's a good man. He's an honest man. And I think that article, I could send more copies if you want to read it, but I'm not trying to push, publish my, what I wrote.
Right, right.
But just so you'll be aware that the Telegram Gazette adopted it, is probably make it theirs.
No, it's, that's just a letter to the editor.
What?
It's, that's just a letter to the editor, unfortunately, to Telegram. The Telegram normally does publish those. They're not, not doing it as well as they used to.
Yeah. Well, they're run, they're different, they're a different organization. The society is going in the wrong direction.
I think it's a lot of chief of asset.
Yeah. And I think, I hope that if this law can be enacted in some way and make it punitive enough to detract, discourage these raises in prices for necessaries of life, it'll protect us.
Okay.
So, I think that we, thank you for the information and that we take it under advisement and kind of postpone to our next meeting and maybe get some more information.
I was just gonna even say, like, I would move to table actually until we have more information. Because there's no, I would be fine with taking it off the table once we have more information, but I should say, leave it, move, leave it on the table and then...
Do we want to actually, I guess, how would we, this?
Because postponement means we have to take action immediately and we're going to at the next meeting. I don't know if we'll have information on that. So, I would just, I would say move to table until legal information or input comes in.
Do we, so do we want to specifically, I guess, request, how, what's the actual process for, for requesting? Do we have to send it up to council to request the use of the attorney to, how does that work, John?
I have no problem with you going to the town manager and asking for permission to forward this as, as part of an investigation into the possibilities of the town.
Does the council, does the council actually have to vote to do that?
No, we, that's never been the case.
No.
I'm not even sure on that. Okay. So, in that case, then we can just talk to the, we'll just talk to, we'll talk to the manager about sending it to the, sending, actually, we actually, I think as the council, we don't have to go through the manager to talk to the attorney. We can do it out of council authority.
So, kind of a referral in terms of the law, you know, the law, or is it just gonna make, you know, listen, take a, they need a referral from the town manager just to say...
Somebody who's gonna pay.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to him. I'll, I'll talk to the manager about it.
Is that statute? To refer this to the town manager?
No, we don't even need that. I would just say, I would just, I moved to table discussion on this until more information comes from our legal counsel.
I don't want to take this one.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Can I have one of the papers I gave you? I want to clarify something.
All right. So, there's a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Nope. There was a motion to second table.
Number one, it's patented, that there's authority in the federal constitution, right here. Declaration of Independence, I'm sorry.
Technically, the Declaration of Independence isn't law.
It is not law.
It isn't law.
It...
The constitution is law.
The con, yeah.
The Declaration is not law.
It's a nice guiding emblematic document of our country. It's a nice guiding emblematic document of our country, but it doesn't have any legal im.
Unfortunately, you're right.
Power.
That is true.
But I think if you took the whole package, Declaration of Independence, Constitution, together.
Oh, that, and we do, absolutely.
So, I think it really has got some force behind it. Now, there was something else I wanted to.
All those in favor? Okay, all right.
I just wanted.
I will, I will talk to Michael about, uh, doing, using the attorney.
I just wanted to just elaborate one more time on this, on this one here, the copy of, um, Article ten of the, uh, federal constitution, it doesn't just reserve it to the states, it reserves it to the people.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, that has the full force of law, the Declaration does not.
Yes.
That is the constitution, that does, that does apply.
Well, you might be right on that, I tend, I, well, of course, I wanna advocate.
I'm not lawyer either.
Yeah, I wanna advocate to, to, to get, punish these people who are killing us financially.
I totally agree with that, I totally agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
No, you're welcome, you're welcome.
I will contact, as I said, I will talk to the, our town, I will talk to our town manager and, and our town attorney and see what we can do.
Yeah, that's good, uh, can you, will you keep me up to date?
Absolutely, yeah, I have your email, I will contact you.
Yeah, is that, that's just one article, I, uh, it's not quite the article, I, I sent you the other article from.
Yeah, I've got it in, yep.
That's another one, now, you can make copies of that, I suppose.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's simple, the chairman can put on the agenda, the motion to take it off the table, so that way we can have that discussion, and have him here if we do have any further input or.
Yeah, I'd be glad to return, as much as I don't like to drive at my age, but I'll be glad to come back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Careful driving home, it's dark.
Yes, I will let you know, um, when I hear back from the manager and or the attorney.
Yeah.
Am I have your email?
Yeah.
I, so I, thank you very much for coming.
Oh, you're welcome, thanks for listening to me.
You, you live in Worcester, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind coming back.
Good luck getting home.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, but I don't mind coming back.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, where are we?
Item number four, Mr. Chairman?
Item number four, thank you. Um, item number four, discuss and review transfer requests for a thousand dollars from insurance deductibles to insurance privately liability to cover the cost of fire, of fire department equipment added to the insurance policy.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions, it's?
Do we, I mean, do we have somebody?
Unfortunately, Karen couldn't make it, and Michael had to leave.
Okay, so, the next person would have been the fire chief, correct?
Yeah.
So.
And nor, normally, normally, he would have gone too.
Yeah, I know, he would have normally been, that's why I'm kinda surprised that he's not. Unless maybe the meeting went too long and he just said, bye-bye.
Well, I mean, I did talk, I did talk to Karen this afternoon, um, this, this particular item didn't, honestly, it didn't seem like it was any major issues for the, for this particular item. Um, so, uh, what do you, what do you want to do?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with going forward, there's a motion and a second on the table, there's no other competing amendments, I say move forward, thank you.
All those in favor? Okay, four, no question. Okay, number five, discuss and review amendment to standard operating procedure number fifteen, capital expenditure. Uh, expenditure, capital expenditure defined, and changing, amending it to any items or goods of ten thousand or more with an intended useful life of five years or more, regardless of funding source.
That's the original, okay, so what's the original language compared to that?
The original language is ten thousand or more for fi, for three years or more useful life. They're offering this.
So, why, why are we changing it from three to five, I guess is the question.
Is Mike here? Mike Marquetti? He was here.
He left, he couldn't make it.
Mike Marquetti was here.
Oh, Mike Marquetti, I don't know where.
Is Mike Marquetti out in the hallway?
I'm part of the capital planning committee, so I can, I can share a little bit of insight on that. So, uh, the idea is that most of the capital items that we, that we currently have in inventory that we own, uh, the useful life is more than five years.
Right.
Um, there's only special items like maybe IT things, like software, or, you know, that might lead a useful life of, of three years, but we don't have anything in inventory right now, so, uh, we really don't need for the threshold to be three years, so we decided to, um, increase it to five based on our, our current, um, assets.
Okay.
Okay, so, that, that makes sense for our current assets, but again, what if we were to get items that were, um, I would consider capital some high investment IT items that were four thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
Like, that's the reason it was set at three, so I just wanna understand, maybe, um, the chairman of the council.
I believe there's also another policy in place, uh, that states five years, and this is to bring everything into your committee.
That's, that's also correct, yes.
Okay, but how does that, that doesn't really answer what Jack asked.
Yeah.
And I actually, I talked to Denise this afternoon, she had the same issue too.
Because the reason we set it at threes, cause there, there, there are three years, is, there are pretty good capital, I mean, the perfect example, not this current manager, but the last manager came up here and told us that Chromebooks for the school system, which were on a lease for three years, were a capital project, I vehemently disagreed with that, but it's been the standing precedent of this town. So, what's the argument, if somebody else could come forward and say, hey, I wanna get Chromebooks for a three-year lease, that's a capital item based on past practice.
And I would suggest that you be a little bit up with no recommendation, or that you, um, wait until you can get, either the town manager, or, uh, finance director, or Councilor Marquetti, who was the chair of the committee, to come forward. I believe he originally proposed this, and we're returning back from council to hear.
And we, and we had originally asked him, um, for more information specifically on whether or not that, that, that board wanted, would include those kinds of IT issues, and there's nothing here's referring to those.
Right.
Any thoughts on that, Adriana?
No, the only thought that we had was the IT, um, aspects, but not every, you know, not, not anything else. But Karen would, would, would be the best person to speak on that, because she keeps, you know, the inventory, uh, she knows what our, all of our assets are, and I think she should be a better person to, to speak to that, and maybe perhaps we can get some answers on Monday, or I can talk to her tomorrow, and send you, send, you know, the, um, the committee an email to further elaborate on that.
Okay.
Cause I remember we wanted like a list.
Yeah, that's true, this is true.
I think we did ask for a list of what.
Do you want me to remind her to see if she can send you guys a list?
Yeah.
I definitely will.
Do you have anything you'd like to say about that, Victor?
Yeah, that's actually what's about to ask.
You know, ti, typically, speaking from my IT, obviously, uh, you know, the, the lifespan of equipment is three to five years.
Okay.
And, um, you know, from my experience from where we came before, we definitely tried to squeeze out the five-year mark, so that we didn't have that expense as frequent, um, but, yeah, it, 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 the technology's changing so quickly all the time, and, um, but with that said, things are getting better and produce better, so they last longer, um, so, we still like to keep it within that three, five-year mark max.
Okay.
Well, quite honestly, I would, I would have loved to hear more from Councilor Marquetti, um, and his thoughts about since he's, he's not here. Um, so, I move that we postpone any decision on this until the next general government meeting, so that way he can be here.
What about sending it up to the committee without a recommendation?
We can do that.
As, uh, the.
I don't think this is an item that's necessarily without, I mean, this isn't gonna change anything within two weeks, like, oh my God, we went from three years to five years. Like, I think we can wait until Mr. Marquetti can be here from his committee, since he wanted it so bad, I would have liked to have him here to help explain this a little bit better, because I'm not sold on the three to five, so if it would pop to me right now, I'd vote no. So, I need, that's why I'm saying I want more information, it's not life-threatening, it's not like it's gonna radically change the process. So, that's why I made my motion to postpone.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? All those in favor? Okay. Postpone again? To the next meeting. Okay. Okay, where are we, uh, number six, discuss and review applying for fifty thousand dollars through grant through the community combat IT best practices to complete technology assessment, I'm assuming that's your avenue there, Victor?
This. Uh, so, we, there have been discussions about that, I know.
Oh, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, direct, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, um, new to the town and learning about the infrastructure here, and particularly the network environment and fiber, uh, potential fiber builds and the flow between municipal buildings, so, uh, we've looked at what's out there for grants, um, to get a feasibility study or assessment done, as far as what we need, where can we connect to these fiber networks, um, and, and, uh, and follow best practice due examples. And that's the, and this is the last year, uh, under this administration, um, for this grant, so, we're hoping we can take advantage of that opportunity.
Okay, was this the thing that you were talking about there, Margaret? Like, a week and a half ago or something? Is this the thing that you and I were talking about a bit, like, a week and a half ago?
No, that was an ARPA grant.
Oh, well, we were talking about that at ARPA too, so you're, you're looking for townwide as opposed, is this townwide or library? Cause I know we did something with library.
This is townwide, but in, in conjunction with those conversations we've had with library and the grant that, that, um, has.
Okay, cool, Margaret?
Yeah, um, I would just like to, um, just underscore how important it is that we would consider fiber optic network for this community. It is going to put us at a severe disadvantage for economic development if we do not move in this direction. We're already behind, and which is sad to see, and, um, it's also going to affect, I mean, we saw what happened during COVID and how, you know, people needed to be connected, and they needed not just connectivity, but they needed like strong, um, uh, good connections and whatever. So, this is the, the whole point about fiber optic, as I understand it, and my knowledge of fiber optic, I have this conception of it, and I have read about it.
Yeah.
And it will allow us to have, uh, stable upload and download, that's the whole point about the fiber optic, as I understand it, it will be at. The library already has upgraded its, um, its connectivity or, or speeds, uh, at a cost, but it's something that we need to do. You know, people streaming, uh, both for recreational, um, pursuits, but also for education. I mean, you know, it's part of the modus operandi, you know, you have to be able to connect, and you have to be able to do it with a good connection. So, um, I would like to, um, I mean, obviously, uh, I'm speaking for the library, but there is a whole townwide emphasis as well, and I think that's the best way to move forward.
Right.
Um, but, I'm hoping that, uh, you know, uh, as we already have put in for an ARPA grant, and that is coming up at council next Monday night, um, that, you know, there is some funding for the library to go forward.
Right.
So, it would be important that, like, we understand that, library first, of that. Just so we, you know, if you think about it, you know, everything that we are, we're dealing with our patients is thought delivered in a virtual and, uh, digital format, and it's moving increasingly more in that direction. Uh, but I can't underscore enough about the disadvantages that we will have on, um, our, uh, economic development. And just one last thing, for anybody who was here in Southbridge in twenty eleven, when we had a tornado, it was the Jacob Edwards Library that, uh, was able to turn around and offer people tea, coffee, and stuff like that, and charging their phones the next morning.
Right.
We were open for business, and not alone that, within a, a couple of short, short period of time, we were working as the, uh, no, I can't think of the name, Disaster Recovery Center, I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to remind people of that, and at the time, somebody, the, um, the fire chief actually at the time asked me, like, how come you were that, you know, he, cause he was the emergency management person, and I said, because a year ago, we were asked by MIMA if we would do a survey of our building, they were doing it, they were offering it to all, uh, public buildings in Massachusetts. And I thought, well, if there's no cost involved, yes, so we did the survey, they had all our information on file. On a Saturday morning, they moved in with these huge articulated props onto Main Street and got us set up. And that's what I'm talking about, is, it's the being ready for the unknown, and we've seen enough of that. I think that's two strikes already, we've had COVID, and we've had, uh, the disaster with the, uh, tornado. So, I'd like to, uh, propose that we would move forward with this, and I really value the, um, the assistance and knowledge that I'm, you know, from colleagues.
Right.
Both Adriana and, uh, Victor have assisted with moving this forward.
Right.
But, um, I just want to, as, um, what was her name, Mrs. Ellen says, don't forget the library. Because if the other, it's, like, I hope we can find other funding besides ARPA. And, like, I'm not making a promise, but I'm saying that the library has, uh, long reach, and I think we might be able to get more funding. So, it's more feasible that we would move forward with the library, and it's the obvious place in my estimation. I know every department has that feeling, and I'm just advocating for my department, as I'm here tonight, and I've waited an hour and a half to say it. So.
Okay, uh, we got several people hands up, okay, I saw Jackie, then Jasmine, then Martina, then Francie, okay.
Um, I'm, I'm in full support of this, um, anything to modernize our communication system, um, and internet access is more than, more than helpful. All I have to ask is, will this improve our crappy wifi here in town? Because our wifi is the worst I've ever seen out of any municipal government anywhere.
Yes.
It will certainly help, for sure.
Cause I, 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 I've connected five times already during this meeting, to the internet, just to be able to keep up my packets, so.
It might be, it might be your phone, cause I, I keep my, my signal stays all the time. Except once, once in a while, once in a great while, I lose it occasionally, but for most, but I'll keep it, so.
If it's of the, um, guest, that wifi one, that one is terrible. We have a, a, a private internal one that we use for staff, and that one's fun, should be fun.
I think that speaks to the importance of that we have a fiber network, and that everybody has access, and that there's no, you can have half this, and you can have, uh, you know, a tenth of that, because I think that's what we're dealing with right now, is, there's a lot of people who cannot afford, we've listened, um, to the previous speaker, who talked about like necessities, you know what? But, n- network connectivity is just as important as having.
That was kinda where I was going with that comment.
Oh, I totally, I totally agree, totally agree.
We really need to see that in that way, and if I could just add one last thing about it, it needs to be a utility as well.
Yes.
That is a really important thing, but that's for another forum, but I would like people to be aware of the fact that this is really important, that, you know, it needs to be regulated so that people aren't charged exorbitant fees for poor service.
Yeah, uh, yeah, exactly, totally, totally. Okay, Jasmine, hold on, uh, Jasmine.
Um, so, um, I co, I completely agree, and I do agree with Margaret that it does need to be a utility, um, because, you know, I mean, we saw it through the pandemic, it just, and, our residents were getting information online when we were doing the live feeds from the police station, and so, we were sharing vital information, um, you know, from that site, and some people didn't have access to that, and so I do think it's important. Um, my question is, is there like a matching cost to the grant?
No.
Okay.
No.
Um, and, so, all municipal buildings, like the schools and everything else?
Uh, it's, uh, it was in, in our original conversations considering, uh, all municipal buildings and schools, um, of, but this is just a, a starting point, um, really, and I know we talked about the utility part of it. Again, that's a great forecast like for the future, uh, but we, we need to start with the infrastructure here first.
Right.
And then build upon that, we don't even know where, um, fiber comes into town, like, we know that the MBI projects stopped at Sturridge, and, and kind of, um, uh, they, they benefit from that, but we don't know where it comes in closer to us to have some of these bills. And so, at least with, starting with an assessment, um, we can build upon that and go forward, you know? Even if it is starting with library, and then adding another building, you know, at least we have the, the best practice and reporting to, to guide us on that project.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Martina?
You mentioned the schools, and then you kind of sucked it back.
Oh, no, I, as I come from, my previous, you know, employer, we took care of school and town, both. So, I, I'm an all-inclusive mindset, um, but I don't think it's fair to have that conversation without the representation from that end.
Oh, okay.
I, I, you are speaking to I.
Okay.
She's a school community chair.
That's why I always. That's why I always ask the school questions. Our receiver, we, as you probably know, we're under receivership. And I am the chairman of the school committee, but sometimes that is a powerless position at this point. But believe me, I will advocate most strongly for you.
Good. Okay, Francie?
So I just wanted to bring up, because this to me would be an excellent thing to bring in townwide, even municipal. My concern is what we went through with COVID when some of us had to work at home. My previous coworker had to invest in upgrading his Wi-Fi network and mode, you know, and had to pay out of pocket so he could work at home. Because his, it wasn't, you know what I mean? It wasn't fast enough for the downloads and stuff he had to do for work. So my thing is if that, working from home has to, to me somehow has to be in the conversations, then how do we get that fast speed fiber, whatever, for the employees that have to, if in case of an emergency, like what happened with COVID or tornado or whatever? When we had to leave the town hall because we had an asbestos, asbestos or whatever it was, some issue, some of us were at the community center, some were at the, the school department. None of us had computers. That you had one or two people, the tax collector's office had two computers. Will was in the other room. The rest of us were doo 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 doo. You know, so, you know, then you come back to the office and you're drowning and everything because nothing was dealt with because you couldn't access a computer.
That makes sense.
So that's, I agree completely with Margaret Morrissey that we need to have some sort of disaster plan for internet computer access. Because we saw when we moved with the asbestos, it didn't work. Luckily, we had conversion from municipal, we had plenty of stuff to do in training with Karen and Yolanda. But that was only two days, you know, or one day or whatever it was.
That's.
The rest of the time you were, what do you want me to do? You know, sweep the floor? I had no, you know, it's just ridiculous. It was just poor planning.
That's a good point.
Poor, poor planning back then.
Rachel?
Just a quick, that's a great idea.
It is.
Board of Health should be doing disaster planning. That's something that could be maybe.
I believe they are. I don't know if that's included in, but that's a good point, yes.
Because I worked Board of Health for years in my first, first municipal stint. And I learned a lot and I worked really closely with the state on the municipal disaster planning.
Right.
Coming up with the plans and the flows for vaccinations and all that good stuff. But that was part of it. So I mean, that's something that, you know, Daniel might be willing to.
Good, good point. Thank you.
And the other building we used, like you said, when we had the flooding, whenever it was, people were at three o'clock in the morning, taken out of their homes because the river rose past to the point of their porches. Basements were flooded, you know, near Cohasse River and what do you call that? What I call South Village.
Oh, right, right.
Right, was flooded and Cohasse and, you know, they had to get on the back of a DPW truck. Now they lived at the community center because that was the temporary shelter.
Sure.
You know, but now they were all trying to charge their phones, all trying to get internet, you know, and trying to communicate with their families. And you had one, you know, two office lines.
Right.
You know, their cell phones, because it was the, I don't know what the issue was with the technology. But all of our buildings need to be upgraded.
Right. That makes sense. Jackie?
Just briefly on this, and then I want to go back to the conversation, which is a minute at hand. Wouldn't that be a great, don't they have those hotspot flash drives that can be encrypted that employees could have on their laptops so they could have an access to a secure network at any point? Like, that's something to consider too. Because I know I had one for my position. I had it encrypted, one of those things, it plugged in and I had access at all times. Because I had to have a specific VPN on mine, we have it be registered at a certain IP address so I can even access the documents I needed to access. So I think that's, that's something I think that can be considered as part of disaster planning. But on the grant, I think this provides the town the ability to at least have the basic network of fiber optics in place so that way we can even consider doing something like that.
Well, it's the assessment to, for what we will need to start something like that.
Okay.
Exactly.
Would the disaster planning kind of element be, could that be included in this assessment?
In, in the grant or the assessment, whether? I believe so, because there's a list of best practices.
Okay.
And that is one of the things on that list.
Okay. Good enough.
John, how does it sound?
Oh, sorry, glad you.
Mr. Chair, were you in the interest of completeness? Is this the best practices grant or fund or what is?
Oh, you mean the, or the source of it?
Yeah.
Victor?
It's the best, it's a community compact IT best practices.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And as far as disaster preparation goals, I believe the fire chief just created a plan.
It's like this thing. I don't, I don't recall, I don't recall, I remember when we talked about it. I don't recall there being any reference to the internet when we talked about it, but it could very well be in there.
At some point.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Okay, so any for the comments in this room? All those in favor? Okay. Where are we? Number seven, discussing review proposed amendments to Southbridge zoning bylaws, section is five, nine point one and ten.
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, before, oh, before we, before we jump into that, I just want to let you know, Mr. Malouf, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, by the way. If you, if you wish to say, you're certainly welcome to, but you do not have to. Okay, just saying. Anyway, so.
They're charging their cars.
Huh?
They're charging their cars.
Oh, you are? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, that makes sense. They're charging their car.
Oh.
It's like, it's like. Okay. I'm not trying to throw you out, by the way, just, you can sit. Okay, so Eric, I think this is your thing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. So back in 2018, I guess November of 2018, the town approved all new zoning bylaws. It was a whole new suite. And over the last five years, the planning board has been looking at upgrades and changes as they've worked with these and as they've realized that some of the things that sadly went to council were not things that the committee who wrote the bylaws actually had recommended to go to council.
How was that coming?
So, long story short, they made a slew of changes. That would be, and in this case, we're looking at section five on that end. Section nine point one, we were mandated by state DCR or DOR, I don't know, one did the other, to make changes to our flood bylaw, our flood hazard bylaw. And same thing with section 10, we need a whole new section in section 10 about definitions for flood uses. So basically what I'm looking for this evening is for a recommendation to go to council to recommend back to the planning board to set a public hearing date where we would have a joint public hearing with the council and the planning board together to review these, these changes with the public and everything. I think that's pretty simple.
Yeah, we've done this repeatedly.
Yes, we've done this several times since I've been here, like four years.
As I recall, at planning board, you were talking about doing the public hearing in early March.
We would like to do it in early March, so if at all possible, you know, the faster we can get to council, obviously the better.
Right.
Obviously we are. If not that, by mid-March would be great. I mean, there isn't any changes I need to make at this point, so it's simple enough just to pull it up.
Yep. Any further questions on this one? All those in favor? Let's see here, number eight, discussing review the license agreement between Southbridge and the Southbridge Softball Association for the use of Henry Street Field.
So.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think it's pretty straightforward. Aside from the small speed bump that South, Southbridge softball has faced with fire damage recently, they always do a bridge of taking care of their field. They maintenance and manage it, most of it themselves, of course, with some help of DPW. But as far as I'm concerned, with the multiple parks and multiple fields that I have to manage, they are very good at making sure that I don't have to worry about it. We have great communication and I just don't really see why we would need to change any of that system. So I'd like to see the agreement continue.
There aren't any changes to this?
No.
Okay.
I just need clarification, do they rent that field, reset?
No, well, essentially it's, it's our field at the end of the day.
Oh, well, I know we own it.
Yes.
But do they, you have a lease, you have a rental agreement.
I don't believe so, no.
You don't pay money to use it?
No, they don't, they don't pay the rent department.
I don't, I don't, from what I understand from the discussion we had at ARPA, they don't, they don't pay us for it, but they, but the agreement has it, they, they maintain it.
Yeah, they do, yeah, they do, and maintain it.
No, because they could determine, it could maybe taxable if it's being rented.
It may be, something like that, yeah.
Right, so that's why you need to know, because that should be written in the lease.
No, something I suppose we could look at, but at the moment, they just do such a great job at, you know? And yeah, I was gonna say, there's enough, there's enough base.
It's less messy, you could put it that way.
Of course, there's enough baseball and softball fields in town, so it's, we got more than enough. They manage it, they do a great job maintaining it. There's two other fields there that I have to worry about, so. Honestly, the cost of staying it, like the savings just to not have DPW go and maintain them all the time is worth it in and of itself. Charge us the fee to just go have one of our employees go do it, like. DPW does help, but they, they, like softball does very much the heavy lifting for this field.
Yeah, I've heard they painted, they paint their own lines, they replace the bags, they, you know.
And along with the, along with the fire damage, they're basically at like pacing at the starting line to just anything that they can do to help.
Right.
Of course, it's a myriad of stuff with insurance and who's going to end up doing the work to fix it up. But if anything that they could do to help, they're, they're ready.
Right.
So, yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're great citizens.
And usually like the DPW, because of course my brother did it, but they would pick up the trash, put it in the thing. But then overnight, the thing is turned over. It has nothing to do with the softball.
No, no, I was gonna say, that's, yeah, I was gonna say, that's just a conversation.
But all the stuff is contained, well, it's not all over the field, it's in one pile, I'm saying, under the.
Yeah, exactly.
The trash container, anyway. This is our subject.
I know, one of the things that they had, that the whole reason they came to ARPA was the fact that they were seeking ARPA money to help, to help redo the lights.
Yes.
So they kicked in, I think it was seventeen thousand bucks. Something like that, of their own funds to, to, to help kind of provide some match for the, for the town's ARPA funds.
Right.
So they're, they're certainly willing to pay their share.
I think the DPW mows it because they have the equipment that is larger, you know, but as far as the day-to-day picking up and painting this or painting, you know, they'll pitch in kind of thing.
Right, oh, absolutely.
What they can do, you know.
It's a good agreement. It's coming to a deadline, I'd like to see if it moves up.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Good enough. Okay, number nine, discuss and take, potentially take any necessary action on the concept of centralizing town billing.
Do we have any, yeah, do we have anything on this?
I did talk to Karen about it this afternoon, unfortunately she can't be here. So I'll do quickly summarize what I discussed. She, she was suggesting that there was a capacity, some capacity in the collector's office, but would likely need an extra person. We didn't have specific fundings, funding at this point of what, what it would cost. But that, that there might be some extra space in there when the real estate and excise taxes aren't, aren't being processed. The issue came up at our trash committee meeting because of the fact that we're going to have to start doing some sort of funding for curbside going forward. They also have the issue of possibly needing to do some sort of funding for collections for stormwater issues. We already do water and sewer. The collector, Karen said that the collector also already does some of the other stuff like airport billing. We already outside bill ambulance bills. So the question, so I, I wanted to throw this in based on the discussion that we were having at the trash committee to see if we think it's a good idea to either keep it in-house and create a building department in-house, put it into some specific department that already exists, or do we want to contract it out, kind of like the way the ambulance does it?
So.
It's kind of starts the discussion, it's not, we're definitely, definitely not ready to do it.
My thoughts on this, Mr. Chair, are I would like to wait until we have a new finance person in. I'd like to have, you know, our accountant actually on for a little bit.
That totally makes sense, yeah.
And I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. I'd like to have the experts tell me, you know, have Karen here or somebody who's been doing this tell me like, hey, this is what we're going to need X, Y and Z on. This is a good idea, but I would feel more comfortable waiting until we actually have the proper staff in place to even start having this discussion, because we don't have their recommendations. We're, we're just talking amongst ourselves and no offense to anybody in here.
You're right.
We're not experts in this.
We're not.
So I, I would rather feel, I would feel more comfortable having them here.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree with you. I mean, when I originally threw this idea out there, I didn't know Karen was leaving. So I had, I figured she was going to be here and we would, Rachel?
I just wanted to make that, I agree, we're not ready to discuss this at this moment. But time is of the essence. So the just, wherever it goes, it's happening.
Yes, it is.
It's a huge process to build a bill file for, like, I mean, we're starting from scratch, creating a whole new billing system, no matter where it is, whether you're setting it up, whether it's still in my office or whether it's, it's big.
Yes.
And there's just so much to do. I mean, first, obviously you guys got to figure out how you're billing it. Like, now this is the structure, but so I would just, I just urge you not to delay. Like, as soon as possible, don't wait too long, you know, because it could be six months to a year before we have a different finance director.
Unfortunately, that, that could possibly be true.
I don't know.
I don't, and we don't want to be that bold, yeah.
So I mean, we have resources, other communities to reach out to. I just think time is of the essence because of our issues of trash coming to a head and it's coming. We can't stop it.
Yes.
That's all I just.
Actually, when mentioning that, I wish I had thought of this last night when we were, or Monday when we were talking to Charlie Blanchard. If I had have asked him if he had experience doing that at the time, but it didn't occur.
Could you repeat what you're saying, Gus?
Oh, I said, I said, if I had thought of this on Monday, I would have asked Charlie Blanchard if he had experience doing that as interim company and town manager, so.
Mr. Benoit, I'd like to throw you, Mr. Benoit, that's coming from, he's the DPW director.
Yeah.
He said he was on the water and sewer, which, you know, doesn't have anything to do with trash, but the water sewer commission.
Yes.
Okay? I looked into the software somewhat and I don't know anything about the ambulance. The airport thing, there's only forty-three bills they do. This is not apples to apples.
Oh, no. Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
And they can't even, in the collector's office, can't do it monthly. They can't do it quarterly. One thing is $230, another one is $480, depending on the size and their lease and all that with the airport. To my knowledge, the tax collector's office is billing it once a year.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a recurring bill in the system. I, you know, you can't set up sixty-six thousand recurring bills in the system. There's existing utility bills, but that has to be tested. It has to go into software develop, you know what I mean? It's not, we have thirty-eight hundred, I, I looked through it, we have thirty-eight hundred existing accounts. You have to deduct out the ones that have dumpsters, you know? So I went down, it's down to thirty, I don't know, it's on my sheet, thirty-six hundred or whatever the figure is. So we got, that's three thousand accounts that I, you know, we have to create in utility bill.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know? And it's not mentioned in their software until the 2021 version, or in 2019. So.
Upgrade is.
Upgrade, you know, which, you know, it's forthcoming, but I'm just saying, and it's mentioned as a fixed fee, a miscellaneous charge, which goes away every time you bill. It doesn't stay on the account.
Oh, you mean, you mean the, you mean the trash, trash would not, doesn't, doesn't actually stand.
And the way the software is telling me in the manual for 2021. I personally would not set it up that way based on my experience. But I need the GLs, I need, you know what I mean? You need stuff beforehand to even start. So, and I need to be able, we asked for training quite some time ago. And we've got a price quote, it's exorbitant, it's high. But the two people I need to connect with, you've brought in utility billing, are those two people in municipal. I can't be a half. I can't be a half hour here, a half hour there, doesn't work. I'm just saying, as an employee, I need, the timeframe is the kicker, as Rachel said, that's the.
It sounds to me like it's more of a body problem than it is centralization problem and it, that's just, that's something that's not unique to this department. It's not unique to municipal.
Oh, sure.
Every town municipal, like departments are looking at the same problems.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Having a staff to do this.
Well, that and your discussion, the pro, the whole program, sounds like, it sounds like your idea, you're talking about the all issue being, also the, the software is like, totally out of date.
It's not just because of trash coming in, it's existing issues. I, today was ridiculous, how much, I don't want to go on here.
Yeah, we're on the agenda of it, so.
Okay, that's, that's a little, but thank you, thank you, tell me, because I did not know that was an issue.
There, it's just, I need the data, I need the time with Tyler Tech, and that has to be put in the budget.
Oh, absolutely, okay.
And the GLs have to be created for me to test it, I can't, I can't, you know, wing it, I need. And I can wing the dollar amounts, you know, as far as the fees, but not the GLs.
Okay.
I need the GLs fixed.
Okay, good to know.
And that, because that's where the testing come in, does it flow to the GL, does it, can I make a payment against it? Can I, you know?
Right, okay, that is, that's definitely well over my, that's definitely well over my, yeah.
Huh?
That's definitely well out of my range.
My experience is there, it's just frustrating that it's taken this long, you know, it's not.
Thank you, I did not know that was even an issue, so thank you. Okay, good.
I'm wondering, and I, I do agree, I do think that we need to get more information. I'm wondering if we can ask the town, the new town, the interim town manager to do that comparison that Rachel was talking about and get us information about maybe what other towns are doing or how this is done. You know, maybe Karen might have some ideas as to how this could be done before she leaves. And so just getting more information, but not completely forgetting about it and not, you know, like actively doing some work around it, because it is gonna be something that we'll need to look at sooner than later.
We can even postpone, try to communicate.
So I have comparisons already, or.
Oh, okay.
Saying your utility bill, which is a utility billing department, different states, different, they all put it on, Holden, my brother lives in Holden.
Okay.
Okay, he gets one utility bill, water and sewer, electric, electric, trash pickup, one line for trash pickup, one line for recycling, one line, you know, electric. Of course, he goes to tax collector's office and complains, but anyway.
Urban district.
And something else, it's like five things on his utility bill that the town of Holden is charging for. So I've contacted, there are other towns that do do it, but they don't use Munis, so it's a moot point. To me, they use a different software, so I, okay, you know, if they're not using Munis, it's not helpful.
That's, that's, that's a good point to know, yeah, okay.
But it's what the majority of offices use is Munis, correct? The majority of offices in the Commonwealth use Munis, so it shouldn't be that hard to find. That was not what we were told.
Yeah, Munis is, is.
It's pretty popular.
Yeah, like we were told it's the majority.
But it's pretty popular.
Yeah, it's popular. Not all, not all of them use utility billing, that's the problem. They use Munis for accounting, you know, accounting and this and this, right? Webster uses Munis for water and sewer. Both Webster and Holden are not town employee, are not contracted water and sewer employees, they're town employees. It's a difference in the rate structure, because it's not a contract with an outside vendor.
Okay.
So if we're trying to get an outside vendor for trash, but I'm just saying, you're gonna have apples to apples, you know, to say.
It makes sense, that's.
So if you're looking for comparison, you need somebody, a town that is contracted, you know, well, all three things are contracted, water, sewer, and the trash, and they use Munis, Munis is the big ticket. You know, if they don't have the contract, at least if they're using Munis, you know, it would be helpful to know, but. Go ahead, oh, sorry, that, yes, yes.
Okay, let's move on, I think Martine was next.
I know you can't make this suggestion, but were you able to make this suggestion? Would you suggest that we did it in-house or sent it out?
Without research, I can't make that suggestion. I need to be able to talk to Munis support, there has to be a four-hour session and maybe another four-hour session with these two specific people, I don't want Joe Blow from, you know.
Oh, yeah, I know, if you get, if you get information, when you call the tech line and you get information, it may not be helpful.
Right, these two people that I dealt with previously for my conversion are very test-oriented, are very, let's, and this one I talked to today, it has to be tested, you have to have access to this, access to, so I was happy with his approach, I just didn't like the answer at the end, you know, because we've got to pay extra, let's not go there.
Totally, totally, totally.
But I can't give you an honest opinion without talking and that appointment being booked with the two people, Kimble Young and Hamut Sait, I can't pronounce his last name, but anyway, those are my goal, go-to people.
Okay, cool, thank you.
So my, my comment on this is not in favor of either option, but to just consider the risk of either option. We do have stuff, ready, willing, enable, and knowledgeable on billing. In-house, we have the programs, we have the systems, the minute, low-risk end of it is already farmed out, the stuffing and the envelopes and the, the time-consuming, T D's part, that's low risk.
Okay.
If we found something out, anything, not just billing, like anything, you have to oversee that farmed-out product. So you still have to have oversight. And that's what comes to last, once you farm it out, you kind of forget about it. So that's something, I would just consider those thoughts when you're thinking about what direction I want to act in.
Generally speaking, if you, if you do farm it out, who does the oversight?
That's where it falls through the cracks.
What did you say, Gus?
I asked what, generally, who does the oversight?
Or, you know, there's nobody in charge, typically, you know.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
And with trash, you need somebody as well to consider who is going to approve, like water and sewer, right now, I do water and sewer baitments, applications, I process them.
Right.
The DPW director has to look at them and approve them, they have the authority. They do the DPW permits, they do house number assignment, you know, there's a lot of stuff that comes from the DPW director.
Right.
Now, the Board of Health, Daniel, well, I can't remember, that's the thing. He would be the help in, you know, like knowing, should these people, should this location get trash picked up or not?
Right.
Should it, because it's mixed use or commercial, or whatever the reasoning? So to me, in the bylaw, maybe he is the authority to approve, because suppose I create it and I charge the wrong account, the wrong location.
Sure.
They should have the process to appeal it, under the bylaw, they would appeal it, but I have to have some department head that approves it. Or if I'm their department head, but I'm doing the work, that, you know what I mean, it's, that's a, what do you call it, a conflict or a,
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
That has to be discussed with Mr. Wasik when you, you know, or whoever is going to approve it, or.
So in this case, so we would put this process into the, I'm just trying to think of how we would do this. We, we would need to put that kind of a process into the bylaw that creates the, the, what's the word?
Trash.
The, the trash revolving fund, or how, where would we put it?
The enterprise fund?
The enterprise fund, is that where we put it?
I guess, that's really, I don't know if it's a legal issue or a.
That's a, that's a good question, we didn't, that's something that has not come up at, at the trash committee.
Oh, no, they were talking at the trash committee about the enterprise.
Oh, yeah, but not that particular issue of it, so that's a good point.
The funding mechanism, that's where the GLs have to be decided if we farm by law. Again, if I'm able to talk to somebody at Munis with, you know, the town's last name or whoever, you know, but I can't, if I create a ticket, I'm gonna get nowhere.
Right, oh, totally, okay.
I move that we postpone this item until we have the manager or a finance director or somebody present, so we can actually have a meaningful discussion, because this is great, but right now, we're just bouncing ideas off to the other one, we have nothing to do.
Now we know we have problems, now we can ask the questions.
Exactly, so I, I think, once we have the appropriate people here, we can better discuss this.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
So through you, through the chair, so could I ask, is the billing person that, I don't know if it can be done as a separate meeting with just that one issue.
We probably should do that, yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that.
Because this is a lengthy discussion, it's not, you know, wait until.
Yeah, that's good.
These big decisions should be left on their own instead of on to a law.
I don't want it to be discussed.
And we need it not after some other meeting, but in a separate room that's not, you know what I mean, conflicting with another meeting, because I've been here, you know, I came to work at eight this morning, you know.
Don't disagree.
I totally agree with you, we've been here way too long. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, was there a second?
Yes, by Mr. Counsel, read this.
Okay, any, okay, all those in favor? Cool, excellent. So we will definitely be bringing this back up, and I think, I like your idea of doing it as, totally as a one agenda item, because this really, this is a lot more complicated than I thought it was, so.
Yes, I think, I think that we were enlightened to see.
Very much so.
So it's good it was up each.
Yes, so.
Very much so.
But at this meeting, of course, I, but I would ask for, he's looking in the back door, but, but, you know, there's IT issues and software issues that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and on the conversation today with software support, they brought up those, well, your IT person can help you do this or that, or. I was like, well, yeah, it can, but you're on the phone with me, why can't you help me now, so.
Yeah.
So it's, I don't know how, it's not my department, it's, you know, it's Tyler Forms, it's, you know what I mean, it's like, it's ridiculous.
No offense, Mr. Chairman, we are done on this subject, we have loaded, can we continue on to agenda number ten?
Oh, yes, we are, yes, we are. Adjourned.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Oh, no, agenda item number ten, don't we have to, the strategic municipal services.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the.
Agenda item number ten, Mr. Chairman.
I'm looking at my, I'm looking at the old items, sorry.
Discuss slash review a transfer request for ten thousand dollars from treasurer collector salaries to treasurer collector special services.
Sorry about that, is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Okay, any comments or questions on this one?
The treasurer collector's office on this one?
It does not look like there is, let's see here, actually, I talked to Karen about that one too. She said that she's, that they're interviewing new candidates soon, Joanne is actually leaving, our interim, but they'll have, they will have a replacement from the same firm to fill in. About, she said that they want, I asked her specifically why, if we would make, if it would make sense to set this up for the rest of the fiscal year, and she said that because of the, that she's figuring that if they can bring somebody in soon, they will need it that long, but if we just do it for one month, that'll give them a little more flexibility in the bu, in the, the salary budget as a whole, so that when they hire somebody in, they'll have the money still be in that account. So, and that one of those people that's interested is also interested in doing the treasurer finance director slot, combining those two instead of doing the accountant finance director like it is now. So, much your pleasure.
I would move in this up with counsel.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I can, I can share a little bit more information in detail on this one. So we do have a candidate that's coming in next week for an interview for that position. And then Joanne actually gave us a referral today for a treasure, a permanent treasure collector. And we've done some outreach and we're waiting for him today, because we just got the information today. So we're waiting for him to get back to us, so we, you know, we are exploring and we have candidates in mind. And, and she is leaving, she's gonna get us through the audit this week, and then she is leaving, because, you know, she, she does have a house in Florida, she wants to get to her, to her house in Florida. But we have, we have also been in discussions with Mike Conrad, who is the VP of the search firm, the firm that she works for, and he does have another contracted person in mind, should we meet them in the interim?
Okay, do you have a timeframe for the, for interviewing this potential candidate?
So we have a tentative interview for, for Wednesday, and then the second, the gentleman, we're just waiting, we literally, Joanne just gave us that information today, but we were really excited. And we've emailed him, because that's the, you know, what she gave us as a contact, as an email address, so we have to wait for his response, so we can let there's room.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, coming from Joanne is someone that she knows, it's, he's someone, he's a treasure collector, someone from the industry, so that, that gives us a good feeling, she would not make any recommendations, she, she used to be the, the president of the, of the whole Treasure Collector Association, so she has a lot of contacts.
Okay, that's good.
Question, okay, because this is making me think about a couple of things. One, so you said our treasurer collector's leaving at the end of the week, is that correct?
I believe next week, because there is an audit next week, and I think she's, she's trying to get us through.
Because we voted to appoint her, right, so that means we're gonna have to vote to appoint the next interim, which, if we have somebody, we should get that through as soon as possible, not wait until the last second, because this is sounding like it's gonna come up at last second again, and I'm not gonna be happy if it does.
Yes, it does.
Because this is, we, now that we know about it, it kind of should have.
So I know, I know that the town manager's been in discussions with Mike Conrad back and forth, so I'll, I'll remind him again tomorrow to see if we can get a little further, just to line that up, because you're right, I mean, like, next week is right around.
Because I, I'm, I'm, like, it's, it's coming around, like, we ought, we should have had somebody approved before.
Yes.
Because again, that's gonna, that's an incredible, that's an incredibly important office that is continuously understaffed and undersupervised, and yet again, now there's, there's somebody that's gone. Like, it's just very frustrating from the citizen's point of view to just continuously watch the turnover there and not be, we're not, as a town, prepared to replace them in a timely manner.
And, and, and just so you know, Joanne wasn't a permanent solution, she's a contractor, so we're not losing her per se. She's only here for, you know, she is retired, so she's only allowed to work a certain amount of hours as well, you know. So we knew that it wasn't, we were only gonna have so much time with her. And that's why we've been pushing so hard to try to, you know, get our positions out there, try to, you know, generate some interest. We've had a couple that have fallen through, they've decided to stay with their communities after, you know, we've, we've interviewed them. And now we have two in the pipeline, but you're right, it's, just so you know, the town manager has been, you know, emailing the search firm, and it took him a while to get back to him, he finally did. He might have been looking on his, you know, maybe he just didn't have anybody and he just found someone, so. I'll touch base with them tomorrow, just to make sure that we have the, get some momentum, because you're right, a week is gonna be a blink of an eye and it's, and it's gonna be here.
Especially if, especially if, again, if the firm knew about this and the firm was not contacting, that makes me question the firm or about their level of professionalism.
Right.
Like, this, there's a lot of questions here, like this is, this level of instability could have been avoided. So, that's all I have to say.
I have a quick question about the firm itself, do we, so we have a contract with strategic?
Whatever it is, yeah.
Consulting.
Consulting?
Yes.
And how long is, do we?
Whatever Joanne's, I mean, and, I mean, I, we, look at, look at who they gave us, Joanna's wonderful, so in terms of the quality of the hire, we've had, they've been.
Would it be easier to appoint the, the cert, the firm itself instead of the individual? Because that might be the problem here.
I don't know that we could do that, I'd have to find out.
Okay, because that would save us a lot of legal logistic issues if we don't have to go back forth and have to approve every single interim person they're gonna send through.
Right.
Buzzing, because like, when's our next meeting, the twenty-seventh, so God forbid, we needed somebody the day of the twenty-seventh in that office, we wouldn't have anybody, right? So that, that's, that could have been, again, this is, this is stuff to look into.
I agree, yeah, I was thinking the same thing too, wondering if we could have done that.
That's, that's a very.
I didn't know that.
Because that's what a lot of companies end up doing anyways, they just appoint the firm to be their accountant or their treasurer for their body instead of the person. And I don't, I don't think there's anything specifically listed in our charter that says we can't, so.
Well, you have to appoint a treasurer.
But the treasurer could be a firm.
I don't know.
I don't know, that's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question to explore.
Yeah.
That certainly wouldn't be, I certainly would assume that that was the intent.
I mean, in corporate sense, you can have that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, that that wasn't, certainly wasn't the intent of the, of the, the way the charter was written.
That's why it's a limited document.
Nobody even considered it back in those days, when that was the last amendment, so. Okay, so anyway.
So fine with this transfer, as is.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Good, let's go.